Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Davis, Vice Chairman of the Kent County Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here this evening. Just a couple of things I want to mention. Rather than a lot of people get up and say the same thing, I'd appreciate it if you had one person could speak for the group. Those that may be in opposition or in favor. At this time, I call the meeting to order at six o'clock on July the third, 2025. This time, we have the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Peterman. Thank you. Have the roll call this time of Commissioners.
Mr. Peterman?
Present.
Mr. Servon?
Present.
Mrs. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Galvry?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
And Mr. Chester is absent. So you have six present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we need a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
The move is second. Roll call.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Servon?
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to approve.
So you have six yes in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have the introduction for a public hearing instructions.
Thank you. This public hearing is being conducted for the purpose of giving the citizens of the county the opportunity to present testimony on the applications before the Regional Planning Commission. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. All statements are to be made from the podium at the front of the room or via WebEx once recognized by the Chair. All testimony given shall be sworn or affirmed. For the record, please give your name and address. Copies of any written statements or exhibits used during the hearing should be presented for identification and inclusion on the record. The record will remain open for two business days following tonight's hearing. For each application before the Commission, the Chairman will introduce the application. Then the applicant or representative will be given fifteen minutes to present the application. Following that, those in favor will be allotted five minutes each to speak. Then those opposed to the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. When everyone has had an opportunity to give testimony, the hearing on the application will be closed. No decision will be made by the Commission tonight. The Commission will hold a public business meeting next Thursday, July tenth, at six PM, at which time we'll make a decision on the applications heard tonight. All information of record will be considered, and a common vote of four members of the Commission is required to make a decision. Anyone may attend the business meeting, but no new testimony will be received. The public notice of this hearing was published on June eleventh, 2025, in the Delaware State News. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Sarah. At this time, first of all, the agenda this evening would be CS-25-05 Cart Ridge. Helipad Request Conditional Use Site Plan. Approval to construct a helipad and a three-six-hundred-square-foot hangar located inside the Growth Overlay District SM00130-00-0156.0000. The data for the application is as follows. Owner is Juan and Tony Carrot. I hope I pronounced that correctly. If not, I apologize. At five-five-eight North Dupont Highway, Dover, Delaware, one-nine-nine-oh-one. Engineering, Site Works Engineering LLC, thirty-nine Cromer Street, Harrington, Delaware, one-nine-nine-five-two. The zoning district is AR Agricultural Residential. The comprehensive plan designation is low-density residential. Relation to the growth zone is inside. Present use is residential. Proposed use is same with the helipad and hangar. Proposed building size is three-thousand-six-hundred-square-foot hangar. The other court district would be in the fourth district, Scott. School district, Lake Forest. Fire district, Federica Station forty-nine. Aerial location is fifty-three-point-three-one acres or plus on the east side of Indian Point Road, north side of Pine Bluff Road, zero-point-three-tenth miles south of Andrews Lake Road, west of Federica. Identification for property is SM-00-130.00-0156.00. Is there someone here tonight to represent the application? If so, please come forward. Come forward, state your name, take the oath of office.
Good evening. Nick Patel, on behalf of Site Works Engineering, thirty-nine Cromer Street, Harrington, Delaware.
Mr. Patel, can you raise your right hand? And do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay. I appreciate this. So I am here on behalf of the owners, Juan and Tony. And as you had mentioned, the proposal for the conditional use site plan we submitted was for a helipad with a thirty-six-hundred-square-foot agricultural building, which will be mainly used-
Could you bring the mic closer so the audience can hear you?
I apologize. Yeah.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, the proposed conditional use plan was submitted for the proposal of a helipad with a thirty-six-hundred-square-foot hangar slash agricultural building. I understand with the proposals, I wanted to get some information out so it can help, you know, the public that's here and you as well on what their proposal was. The owners, Juan, is a licensed pilot. The aircraft, their purpose for the helipad is just for a hobby. This is not going to be a commercial. This is not going to be for commercial use. This is going to be something that he uses for his own personal pleasure. We're talking about infrequent flights, roughly one to twice a week. We, using the FAA guidelines and things like that, we, the proposed location on his fifty-three-acre, fifty-two-acre parcel is central. Closest property line to the helipad would be about three-hundred-and-ninety-five feet, plus or minus a few feet. The, taking into account the concerns of the neighbors, we went through the process to figure out, you know, how we could provide what the owner would like to utilize his property for, but also taking into account what the surrounding residents and minimize impact on them. We are, he, we are proposing that the flights in and out would come from the east towards his home. So if you're looking at the plan from right to left to into the area and then to take off from left to right. So because it's a lot less dense in the, on the east of the property. According to the FAA guidelines, we've met all the distance requirements. The rear property line from the helipad is almost eleven-hundred feet away. The height of the trees is also not an issue. That'll be verified when we go through that process. But we've done our best to do what we could to accommodate all the surrounding neighbors. And to give you a little bit of information on the aircraft itself, it, for, just for the record, it is an Airbus EC-120B. The aircraft itself seats four, including the pilot. It's about the size of a small bus, I would say, a little bit smaller than a school bus, thirty-two feet long. The, it is one of the quieter aircrafts that, in the chopper lines. The way that, the best I can describe, the noise level, and I know that noise is going to be a concern for the neighbors, especially with the other aircrafts that fly around in the area, the dust croppers and the air bases, you know, right around the corner. The, with the landing site and takeoff site being four-hundred feet away from the nearest property line, they said that if somebody was, the way that was described was if somebody's sitting on the porch on their house, four-hundred feet away, it's almost like listening to a vacuum inside their home. That's the level of noise that this would create coming in or taking off. And as far as rotor wash, which is the turbulence caused by the rotors, the most is, it will dissipate after seventy-five feet. So at four-hundred feet, it would not impact animals, landscaping, people, anything to that effect. So taking that into account and meeting the FAA guidelines, we were able to kind of keep those distances. We were able to meet those requirements and also do our best to minimize the impact of the surrounding areas. So, let's see. And to kind of go into a little bit of other concerns that was brought to our attention throughout the week. This is not, again, not for commercial use. It is for personal use only. No maintenance, no classes, no flight instructions, no other aircraft other than this one would be allowed access to it. And I guess the other thing that was brought to our attention was also pollution. I'm not sure how, what the concern there is, other than the fact that it uses fuel. So there's not going to be any crop dusting used for this. This vehicle, again, it's not a crop dusting plane. It's not noisy like that. It's not going to fly in and low, things like that. And remember, aircraft doesn't need a runway, even though we gave it eleven-hundred square foot, I mean, sorry, eleven-hundred-foot approach path. The aircraft will actually vertically land and vertically take off. So just to give you an idea that it doesn't really need to really impact the surrounding areas. So I feel like there's going to be a lot of questions, but I think that's the best I can put forward now and then do our best to answer your questions, if you have any.
I guess I have a couple of questions. You're saying that this is a helicopter for personal use. Is that personal use connected to a company, any type of company?
No, no.
Because I don't know too many people got a helicopter in their backyard.
Well, it's a hobby. So he just, Mr. Juan just got, he was recently licensed. It's his personal, he purchased it and this is what he does for pleasure.
My second question I'd have is, what are the hours that you plan on flying this helicopter?
If you don't mind, I'd like to bring him up. Like I said, I know-
Okay.
Yeah.
Because at least I asked the question, there's some concerns from the neighbors about the issue of noise and when the helicopter be coming in, when it be departing. And I think it's a fair question, so I'd like to have those answers tonight.
It's absolutely a fair question, correct.
And you have to be sworn in when you come in, the other gentleman. Thank you.
Can you state your name and address?
Juan Carrión Hernández, five-five-eight North Dupont Highway, Dover, Delaware, one-nine-nine-oh-one.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'd like to just tell the audience and the Commission as to what your questions are. I mean, it's very unusual that a person has a helicopter. Rather than jumping in a car, that's your business. If you want to do that, that's fine. But I think the neighbors have every right to know this question. What are the hours? I think I read in our report, you're not allowed to fly at nighttime. I think that was in the report. And I'm very familiar with helicopters. I was in Vietnam two years. I know what you're talking about. So I'd like to know about that. I'm concerned about the neighbor's concerns. Thank you.
Well, we don't plan to fly a lot. We usually fly a couple of times a week. We usually, right now, all we do is fly Sundays on our days off. We work six days a week at our store and we take a day off.
What do you do?
I'm sorry?
What kind of work?
We own the pawn shop across from K-Mark, well, K-Mark now, Panera. That's how long I've been there.
Pawn shop?
In Dover.
All right, thank you.
And we just enjoy flying, you know, I think. And then we bought this helicopter. We don't plan to cause any problems with anybody, you know. We've been there since 2012. We never had any problems with the neighbors until, just a couple little things that have been taken care of. But, you know, we're very peaceful people. We don't party. We don't smoke. You know, we try to keep to ourselves and all we do is work. My helicopter will not bother anybody. I have purchased, let's see, I have purchased twenty-five lots coming in from that area that we plan to come in. So there will be no homes that way. And I did that for the reason that we don't want to bother anybody. And then someone buys those lots, I don't want them to all of a sudden say, hey, now what do I do? So we, we're in the process of buying all those lots, twenty-five lots. So eliminates anybody's problems right there. My helicopter, the only time you'll hear my helicopter is when my helicopter's over your house. My helicopter, EC-120 is the most quiet helicopter there is. And the backwash and stuff like that, they don't have to worry about it. The pollution, probably the crop dusters and those big jets that fly over cause more pollution than my helicopter does, or maybe a tractors. We plan to, you know, to do it right. We enjoy it. I don't understand, well, it probably is weird that someone has a helicopter. But you know what? I worked all my life and I want to enjoy my life and I bought a helicopter. And my wife and I, she's my co-pilot and we fly around. But I guarantee you that I will never be a nuisance to the neighbors. And the way it's set up, there's no neighbors in the area that's going to be affected. Because I could take a performance takeoff right there, straight to the east, right over those properties that I bought. When I come in, I do, you know, I'll just land right there the same way and I won't bother anybody. We don't plan to do any mechanic works. I don't plan to have any more helicopters. I don't plan anybody to fly in to my helipad except us. We're very private. We just want to enjoy our property. That's all we want, like everybody else does. I just wish, you know, they have any questions to ask me, but I guarantee them that we won't, you know, bother to them. And they'll probably hear more noise from all those other planes every day and those crop dusters than from us. And do you have any questions, sir, or miss?
What's the, what's the load of it, what's the loading?
The payload of that helicopter is nine-hundred-and-sixty pounds.
How much?
Nine-hundred-and-sixty pounds, the payload.
Right. Similar to Huey helicopter we had in Vietnam.
Well, the Hueys are pretty cool.
Yeah, they were. All right. Any Commissioners have any questions? Mr. Mills? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Glenn.
Mr. Glenn. Just a few questions. So I mean, one of the things that you said you'd be taking off to the east, so you'll be going across the flight path for the Air Force Base coming into, what is that, one-nine or?
I think it's, I think it's one-nine and-
Yeah. So you've cleared us with the Air Force Base? They haven't seen anything-
We don't touch their airspace.
Okay.
Their airspace is a D airspace. We don't touch the D. You know, we will not violate their airspace. And if we do violate their airspace, we'll ask permission to come in.
I used to be an air traffic controller there. That's why I'm asking these questions.
You're the ones that, when I try to come in for fuel, you get mad at me.
Yeah. We used to have a lot of little planes flying around that were hobbyists that got in the way of some big things and it was a problem off and on. So I just checking to make sure that you've checked with the Air Force Base. The only other, the only other question that I had is that you've told us what your use would be and how you would use it and how you'd be respectful of the neighbors and all that. But actually, all we're really voting on is the heliport itself, the pad. Not necessarily how it's being used unless it's written into the, into that. So my only concern would be is I know a lot of hobbyist pilots that like to fly experimental planes. And I just want, I would be comfortable speaking on behalf of neighbors that you would stipulate that you wouldn't be flying any experimental helicopters out of that pad.
Sir, I love to live.
Okay.
No, sir.
All right.
I'll leave that to somebody else.
Okay.
I'll fly my EC-120.
Great.
In fact, anytime you guys, I'll take you up too.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions by the Commissioners? If not, thank you very much for your testimony and good luck to you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Can I, can I add one?
Is anyone else like?
One more thing, real quick. So to kind of piggyback off of your last question as far as Dover. So this is step one. Once we get to, once, if this is approved, our next step is to then officially get licensed through the FAA and also through Dover Air Force Base. So we still have to go through those processes, but this, there's no point in going through that if this doesn't get approved.
And I should ask the last question. Do you agree with all the staff's comments on the report, what they want?
I do. And like I said, the staff and I have had the conversations and we understood what the concerns were, which is why we tried to address them before the plans actually came to you and then after we spoke with them and addressed the separate concerns. And just, just so you guys know, the plans and the stipulations that the plans set were not set by the FAA. Like the FAA guidelines are a little bit broader. We actually condensed those and made them a little bit stricter for the owner, for the sake of the neighbors. So in other words, flying from the east, like in other, there was no, according to the rules, regulations and the book, there really is no reason to have the restriction coming in just from the east to the west. That was just more because we knew that from the west of, from the west of the helipad, it's more dense. You're going to have a lot more homes. That's why we restricted it to the east and it's on the plan. And also the other thing that we took into account, again, noise factor, that's why we centralized it, tried to meet all those requirements. And then the nighttime flying, I think somebody mentioned that as well. That was also a restriction put on by the owner. That he's saying that, listen, I want to respect the neighbors. I'm not going to do anything late in the evening, early in the morning to disturb anybody. We will do it through the day. So.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor of the application? If so, come up and be sworn in, please. This is in favor. Come on up there. Give your name and the attorney on the screen will swear you in.
Okay, Charles Newman.
Mr. Newman, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I'm a neighbor. I live at one-one-four Lake Drive, which is right by him. And I don't object to it because you have airplanes, you have the military using the airspace. And to my knowledge, it's not unusual to have a helicopter. I worked in Killen State Park. Helicopters land there. Also, somebody on the way to Killen State Park has an ashtray in their backyard for an airplane. So I don't find that very, I don't find unusual. And also I think that someone sent some petition around, which was one-on-sided. I don't know why they were allowed to hand it here. And I just feel that, and also I think it's a misunderstanding. The petition is for the building, correct? Not whether he can land or not. Is that correct?
Are you speaking in favor or against us?
I'm for it, but I'm just saying, we're talking about something here that has no issue. The issue is about the building, not about him landing or taking off.
Who are you referring to?
Your, what your panel was talking about. You're talking about where he's going to be, how he's coming into the pad, off the pad. But isn't this about the building itself? Is that correct? You're bringing up items that have no issues at all in reference to the building itself.
It's obviously a-
Okay, so I'm just saying-
Let me finish. I listen to you and just respect each other, okay? I would imagine it's in the code. But I'll direct the question to our planning director to answer your question.
The use is actually for the helipad itself. So the fact that he can land it there, that is what the use is. So that's what the request is.
Oh, okay. I want to make sure that was it and not just the building. Okay, so I'm in favor for it because the way he explained it to me, I'm not going to be a crabby neighbor and start with the neighbors or whatever that's going on because there's already aircraft flying, you know, the military flies the planes right over my house and the trees, the leaves, I could feel the breeze on my porch. But he's saying he's not going to be doing that. So I don't, I don't object at all and I hope he could fly his helicopter whenever he wants. Supposed to be a free country. So.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else in favor like to speak? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Is there anyone like to speak in favor? If not, we're going to go to anyone that may be opposed to it. Raise your hand. Anybody wants to speak? Got in the back.
Hello, my name is Carl Sussman. I live on Berry, Pine Bluff Road, right across from, you need to swear me in?
Okay, before you start, I swear you in.
Yep. Can you raise your hand? Do you swear firm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Sorry, you can go ahead.
Again, my name is Carl Sussman. I live right there on Pine Bluff Road. Right adjacent from one of those strips that you see going out to Berrytown, it used to be Berrytown Road. It's Pine Bluff Road now. I've lived there for forty years. And it's changed dramatically since he's moved in. He says he's never had any complaints from the neighbors and that's not true. He's, that fence that you see that goes around there has totally changed our neighborhood. I mean, it's, you see a wooden, ugly wooden picket fence going in and out of our neighborhood, all the way up to the street. He is obnoxious to our neighborhood. He has changed it drastically since he has lived here. The last thing I want is where you see that strip it out is right where his helicopter pad is gonna be. I have a pool, the neighbors have a pool, in-ground pools. You can't tell me that thing's not gonna stir up dust as he's taking in and off. Another thing I didn't hear was the hours that he was gonna fly. You did ask him that question, but I never heard the answer to that. There's, once he gets that pad established, the limits on him are basically nonexistent. He, we would have to protest anything that he would do at that, that point. He tells you he does these things, but that doesn't necessarily mean he's gonna abide by those rules. Because he breaks them a lot, from what I've seen. He's not supposed to have farm equipment out on that street. And I've had a hard time getting around a farm on my, my front street. He's not even supposed to be accessing that street from his property and he does. I mean, I, I, I just wanna say that I'm totally against this helicopter going in there, in and out over my house constantly. I'm just offended, I, I live right there, within a couple hundred feet of it. He doesn't need it, it's for a hobby. The guy's a new flyer. Last thing I want is that guy crashing into my house or even anywhere around there.
Okay. I understand your point and thank you so much for testifying, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Ma'am with the hat on. You just say your name, address and then terms for it.
Name's Michael Jordan, address is forty-one Pine Bluff. As you can look on the picture where the second home...
Sir, sir.
You gotta be sworn in?
Sir.
Go ahead.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. May I proceed?
Okay, sir, sir, before you proceed, if you need to point on the screen, if you, um, point on that screen there, it'll show a pointer so that the, the board can see.
We live right there, as you can see. And since the last gentleman just speak, this guy is real arrogant, I must say. He put a fence where, if you can see on the board, right there, that he comes around with his tractor, kicking up dust, disturbing our dog, and he wants to put a helicopter right there. And it's a commercial residence. Now, if you have so much money, why go somewhere else and put your helicopter pad instead of in the neighborhood where people live at? Now, that's just one. Two is, his wife is rude, had an incident with my mother over the fence and she talked real greasy to her and I didn't appreciate that, but that's another sign. But I just think that this guy shouldn't have a helicopter there because for number one, it's a residential neighborhood. Number two, all our neighbors get along. Number three, ever since this guy moved here, there've been problems. And I just think personally, I'm opposed from it, I don't like it. I feel as though if he want a helicopter, he, he got so much money, he can go somewhere else and put his helicopter pad. Now, grant that he got land, that's true, but if he want to fly and do all this, well, take it somewhere else. That's how I feel.
Okay, well, I appreciate your comments and your feelings and have a question?
Just a quick question. Are the houses that I'm seeing all around your houses, all that, all the purple lines and all, is that a homeowners association group or not?
I think so. Uh, I'm not sure.
You're not sure? Okay, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Looks like we have somebody. Name, address, and the attorney will be glad to swear you in.
David J. Killen, seventy-one Pine Bluff Road, Felton, Delaware.
Sir, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I also live on Pine Bluff and I live in this house right there. Can, is there a way that you can bring up the fencing and stuff that you showed in the previous pictures in the introduction?
No, it will, this hearing's only on this application.
Well, well, okay. First of all, the, um, guy that spoke for, for the site plans, it sounds like to me it's more than just a site inspector or planning person to just to build a helipad. Second of all, that helicopter is noisy, we can hear him coming, flying, we know when he's coming in because he has flown in, come down almost to the ground to show people his camels. That's the other thing. If you look on his website, he takes charters and flies people around the, the area and brings them in and to look at the farm. You know, I hear him saying back there, it's a lie, but he's done it on Saturdays and Sundays.
All right, let's, now, hold on, point of order, let's have a little respect for each other. Each one of you get to say your comments, but let's not make it personal. I won't tolerate it, okay? Go ahead, sir.
So it is noisy. We, everybody else that's back here, if they want to stand up and say that I'm telling the truth, that's unless you want to hear from everybody. We don't want it, we oppose it, it's noisy and he's a butthole. We've always, all of us have issues with him and that's why he put that fence up, because he didn't like us.
Okay.
This is a residential, small, dead-end neighborhood, we don't need no helicopter flying in or out. He flies it in Saturdays and Sundays, that's our personal pool time, outside family time, we don't need all the noise.
I understand.
So if you want to take a, a vote, how many people are opposed to the helipad, to what I've said? That's one thing, but if not, everybody else can come up.
Thank you very much. And I have a question for Mr. Mills, Mr. Mills? You come on back, please. That's all right. Sorry, Commissioner Mills has a question.
Yes, sir. It seems like all we're hearing here is all personal problems. Now, we're not here to vote on personal problems, we're here to vote because there's a helipad and it's meeting all...
And the neighborhood does not want it.
I'm talking. Understand? The helipad is meeting all the FAA regulations. Now, as far as the fence, did he put it up on your property or did he put it up on his own property?
Oh, it's on his property.
That's all that's necessary. Oh, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Name, address, and the attorney will swear you in.
Hi, Wigmore, six-three-six Indian Point Road, Felton, Delaware.
Can you, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I swear. Uh, Mr. Creed, uh, it is public record, was arrested in, uh, November of twenty eighteen for stolen goods, um...
I am not going there.
He, he was, I do not trust his moral compass or judgment and I do not trust him to abide by the rules that, that are being presented here.
I'm in charge of this meeting and when I tell you I'm not gonna hear it, that's what I mean.
All right.
I don't want no personalities, you're not allowed to, to talk about criminal history. It's a violation of felony, but as a matter of fact, I don't want to hear it in this, this office again, this room. If that's, that's his business, you wanna talk to him afterwards, fine. But don't do it in a public meeting, I'm not gonna tolerate it. I'm gonna talk about the helipad and why it affects you. You can go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. I also don't believe for one minute that it is, I, I don't care how quiet they say the helicopter is. You will hear it coming in, it's going to kick up dust and pollution. I don't care what they say, if they meet the regulations, that's fine. It's a nuisance. I work all week as well. I should be able to enjoy my time as well as he should be able to enjoy his, but mine is not at the expense of everyone else in the neighborhood as his will be. And I don't believe that it's necessary for someone to have their own personal helicopter pad on their property. And as is stated before, if he feels that he needs that and he likes that as a hobby, it's not necessary to have that in a residential area, period. It, it's, it's just unnecessary. I mean, if there's an airfield so close, why don't you just take a fifteen-minute drive, twenty-minute drive and then fly your helicopter out from there and not bother anybody? It wouldn't be that much of a difference. Personally, I don't see any reason why it's necessary to have this at all, regardless of how you feel your hobby is influenced or what you may want to do with it. And I'm in, I'm entirely opposed. You know, my house, my property is right here.
Yeah, that was my next question.
This is my property right here, so I'm directly across as well, along with my other neighbors, you know? And it's going to kick up dust, it's, it's going to cause problems. I don't want it, I want nothing to do with this, period, bar none.
Thank you, sir, for your comments, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? In mind, we're not talking about personalities, we're talking about the issue itself, I, I respect that, but don't get into the other ballpark, okay? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, hi, my name is Paul McKenna and I live over...
Mr.?
Over in this, uh, right there.
Mr. McKenna, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I've lived there for over, uh, well, about twenty-five years now and they've been great, great neighbors, wanted, they've been great neighbors to me. They haven't caused any problems. As a matter of fact, as far as the helicopter noise, we heard a helicopter, we went to investigate it and Juan did a, did a hover close, close to us, uh, so we could wave and take pictures and things like that. And I felt no wind, I, I felt no blowback from it. So I, I thought it was very, very quiet, actually. And as far as Juan, um, there was a comment about him taking rides up, people up for rides. That's his prerogative if he wants to take a friend up for a ride. That's his prerogative to me and his right if he wants to have a helicopter on his property. That's his, he owns the property. So I just want to say that he's been responsible. I've seen the hangar, um, off-site that he's renting now, it's spotless. He's, he's very responsible with it and I have no doubt that he'll continue to be responsible, uh, with the helicopter and be a responsible neighbor with it.
Okay, just for the record, we had, everybody got done, those in favor?
I am in favor.
And, and I understand you support it. We're now going through testimony for those people that is against it, but it'll be in the record, so you just call it out.
I'm sorry, I got a little fired up after hearing the, the opposition.
We all do once in a while.
I apologize if I'm out of order.
That's quite right, we all get that way once in a while, no problem. So thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There.
A question, it's a fifty-three acre farm and it's agriculture, where's that lie in for a helicopter pad on agriculture zoning?
I, I didn't understand the end of your question, I'm sorry.
Does a helicopter pad lie in the agriculture conservation? Because this is a fifty-three acre farm here, so I mean, is that...
I mean, are you asking if the use is permitted? It is, as a conditional use.
It is permitted, uh, it is permitted.
Explicitly, the zoning ordinance allows this as a conditional use, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, good evening, how are you? My name is Jasmine Marshall and I live at one-three-three Pine Bluff Road. I can't show you on the map, it's a little confusing.
Ms. Marshall, can you raise your right hand?
Oh, sure.
Uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Okay. Now, um, I don't know the gentleman in question, I never met him. And I know that, you know, he did put up fences, which one is right near to my property also. I don't have a problem with that. It's his land and he is entitled to put them up because if people start using it, it'll become an easement and then he wouldn't have ownership anymore. So that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But having a helicopter coming back and forth, you know, it's, the noise is really not good and it will bring down the value of the properties in the area. And you know, when I am trying to make a decision, what I do is I put myself in the other person's place. Now, if you all were living in that area and you had a helicopter back and forth, back and forth, you wouldn't really appreciate it at all. And I know that when my neighbors on the holidays used to, um, do their, um, fireworks, he didn't like it, he complained, he didn't like the noise. So therefore, you should be considerate to the other people in the neighborhood and realize that they're not gonna like the noise either. Just to have a fling, just to be able to fly in and have a, a, a helicopter for the convenience of you and not consider the other people that are living in the neighborhood. So I would really like you to consider, if you were living in a situation like that, what would you do? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a question for you. Ma'am?
Excuse me, I, I just have a question.
Commissioner has a question for you, you're not done.
Oh, sorry.
I, I live in an agricultural area where there's an awful lot of stuff going on that I would gather many of you would probably have an issue with, uh, down in Little Creek, where in the news quite frequently, we have a lot of noise, a lot of traffic, a lot of trucks, a lot of things that are irritating the neighbors and so forth, but we also are in an agricultural area and we're surrounded by crop dusters and just about everything else that goes on, as, as well as the Air Force Base. So I'm very aware of and sympathetic to a lot of the issues that I hear here. My question would be, this is a farm, so if this was actually turned back into a farm and there was a tiller going down that property line, let's just say every other day, churning up the soil and, and with the wind blowing back and forth and making all the noise and all of the, uh, carbon emissions that come out of the exhaust and so forth, you'd be okay with that?
Well, the thing is that if it's a farm, that is necessary. If somebody has a farm and they have to do these things to make a living, then I can't have a problem with it.
So it's an issue as to whether it's, whether it's necessary or not?
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you for clarification.
Okay. Is that it?
Any more questions of the young lady? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, please come forward. Name, address, and the attorney will swear you in. Read to the point.
Name is Linda Sperry, I live at fifty St. Column Drive, Felton Drive, uh, Felton, Delaware. That would be...
Can you?
Oh, and I swear.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
And I live right here, I don't know how you get the pointer there, but right there. Um, I have some, some questions that were not already covered, so, uh, and some issues that I wanted to bring up. Briefly, it was mentioned that there would be no danger to wildlife from pollution or anything like that, but I, I am concerned, there is a lot of, uh, water fowl in our area that land on Andrews Lake. And with this plane coming in and out, in and out, that, I mean, this helicopter, I perceive that could be some damage to the wildlife, not to mention it frightening the wildlife that lives in the woods. Then, um, I'm, I'm still concerned about a crash and fire risk. I live, like I just showed you, and surrounding me is woods and when this helicopter comes in, I can hear it coming in. When I'm in my house, I can hear it coming in, so it's not quiet. Then I have additional questions, it's, um, will, will this pilot be the only pilot that will be flying this helicopter? That's one question. Two, how many other helicopters could conceivably be landing on this helicopter pad?
I'll take them one at a time, best I can.
Okay.
His testimony was it'd be just him, for recreational purposes. He testified this evening, there would not be any other helicopters using his thing commercially or otherwise. That was my understanding of it.
And there's no... And there's no maintenance to be performed in the hangar on the helicopter?
I would assume there is, but I'm not qualified to answer a question like that.
Because along with maintenance comes a lot of noise.
Next question.
What agency will be inspecting this helipad?
I'm not qualified to answer that. These, these are questions that you need to direct to someone else. We're not qualified to answer mechanical questions about a helicopter and the issues a lot of people have concerns about. We know they make noise, but, because I was in Vietnam, I know about them, but I'm not qualified to, I don't know what kind of helicopters he's got, and I'm not getting in the mix picking sides here. So those are the kind of questions you're going to have to ask somebody more qualified.
And how would we go about finding that information out?
Well, oh, Grand, go ahead.
Under the second phase of this, I mean, right now, this is a zoning issue where we're, where we're actually making a determination as to whether the pad for this purpose is permissible under the codes and listening to the, in the testimony of the public. From my understanding, there is another phase that will go on if we, if it was to be approved, and that starts to bring in the FAA and, and a lot of the agencies that govern flight. And so once they get to that phase, um, most of your questions will probably be answered by those documents, but that won't be a part of what we're doing here.
Just to make an analogy for everyone, it's the same as when people come in, um, to talk against a proposed development, and very often their complaints have to do with the roads. We have nothing to do with that. That's still dot. So that's the same sort of thing as to what's going on here with the helicopter.
Another question, will there be any fuel stored on the premises for that helicopter?
Any what?
Fuel.
I would, I would imagine it would be.
There wouldn't be?
There would be. I don't know how you're going to fly, fly helicopters on no fuel.
Mm-hmm. So that does present a fire risk, okay?
But it's no different than a farmer having gas for a tricer.
It's not a higher octane or more flammable?
Some degree. But those are things that would be probably more likely inspected by State Farm Marshal's Office. Those are, those are the kind of questions you could call there from a farm marshal, and he could answer all those questions for the most part, when it comes to fire issues and safety issues.
I, I have one comment, um, that I, I would like to make, and that's about the date and the timing of this hearing. There would be a lot more people here tonight if it was not the night before, the Fourth of July, on a long holiday weekend, and I think that was very poorly planned.
It was out of season in our state news, like two weeks prior to this meeting. People have the option to come or not come. We did receive, uh, one correspondent from somebody who could not be here tonight, and they sent us a, a notification in their possession, which is part of the record.
I'd like to mention on that, our meetings are every first and Thursday night of every month, regardless of what the day before or the day after is. Our meetings are the first and second Thursday night of each month.
All right. That clarifies it for me. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, no one else, um, I'll close the, uh, one more. Okay, let's, uh, let's get, get it out, we have other things due tonight. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mariella Coleman. I live in 122 Pratt's French Road.
Ms. Coleman, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I personally don't know, Mr. Carr, but like the lady in the back was mentioning, I am very concerned of how this is going to affect the market value in our neighborhood. So I am posing the question to here as to how many of these applications have been proposed and approved and denied, and how does it work with, you know, like the real estate value for the Kent County, you know, properties? Because I've been in this neighborhood 10 years. My value has increased, but how is this going to affect moving forward, right? Um, it is a very concern, very high concern for me.
It's a good question. But I'm not qualified to give that information. We're not real estate people.
And, and I understand it's not something that you can answer, but it does start here, unfortunately, because if this gets approved, then it moves to the next state. So it's just something to consider, right? Like, all of these concerns and questions, again, I don't know him, I have no issues with our neighbor, but, right, if this gets approved, it does affect us and it will move forward for other approvals, so it, it does start here, and some of the things need to be considered right now.
Okay, thank you very much for the comments. Okay, no one else, we're going to close the hearing. Yes, go ahead.
Um, Sarah, um, question staff. So in this, in this proposal, are we able to put that, um, the use is not for, uh, gain or profit?
Yes, I would recommend that in this case, that you restrict it to personal use.
So that takes care of the whole commercial thing?
Yes.
And so not for gain and profit doesn't exclude taking your friends up and things like that, right?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I was being clear on that. Um, and we are also mentioning a flight path of east to west. We can stipulate that?
We can, yes.
We can stipulate that, too.
I believe it's also on the plan.
Um, I believe that most of the other things having to do with aircraft flying fuels and so forth will be taken care of by the FAA and the appropriate agencies, so I'm not concerned about that, but I was, uh, also, um, if we're able to stipulate, even though it was said that it won't be done, that, um, that experimental aircrafts are not permitted, okay? Even if they are approved by the FAA for use.
I, I actually already made a note of it for you.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you very much.
Hey, um, if there's no other comments, which is up, hearing closed. For or against?
Uh, for. I'm Joanne Bedwell, and-
Ms. Bedwell?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Bedwell, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. I just want to make a comment. Um, I'm president of the Andrews Lake Civic Association, and I live in Windmill, the development that is adjacent to Mr., um, what's your last name? Anyway, property. And I just went to, um, comment that I sent an email out a couple days ago to every neighbor in my neighborhood, about 35, 36, and, um, sent the attachments of the project, and I got no, um, negative responses.
Is that your testimony?
Pardon me?
Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this, this, uh, application is hereby closed next week. You want to excuse yourself, feel so, feel free to do so. You want to stay for the rest of the meeting, follow. If you take your discussions out in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. Okay, the, uh, the next order of business tonight will be CZ-25-02, Burke &amp; Burke Properties LLC, requesting to amend the zoning map. BG General Business located inside a growth zone overlay district. SM-00-122-00-02, 35, uh, and 36.00. Okay, the data on that, the applicant is Burke &amp; Burke Properties LLC, 97 Wayne Drive Avenue, Milford, Delaware. The present zoning is BN Neighborhood Business, Neighborhood General Commercial. Comp plan designation is Neighborhood, uh, Commercial. Proposed zoning is BG General Business Highway Commercial. Relation to growth zone is inside. Levy Court is the fourth, uh, district. School district is Lake Forest. Fire department is Federica Volunteer Station 49. Area and location is, uh, point 044 plus acres, located on the west side of the Old Beach Road, approximately 1,100 feet north of Bear's Chapel Road, north of Federica, Delaware. The Kent County ID map is SM-00-122.00-02, 35.00, and 36.00-000. Do we have someone to make the presentation? Thank you, sir. I'll give you a name, address, the attorney will swear you in.
My name is James Burke, 97 Wayne D Drive, Milford, Delaware.
Mr. Burke, do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. Um, I purchased this property, it's the old Webb Market on 6975 Old Beach Road, and we're attempting to pump some life back into a, an old building that's been sitting there for many years. Actually, after I purchased this, I found out about the zoning was, was a business neighborhood, because I honestly never heard of that. Um, and my, my goal is to get it switched to business general. We, uh, we want to do a motorcycle sales shop there. And that's, that's basically what we're trying to do.
So, um, what are your hours going to be for the motorcycle shop?
Uh, probably nine in the morning until five or six at night.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm familiar with that site. I am, I am from Federica, Delaware.
Okay, yeah.
And Webb's Market is back longer than what the report said here. Been there forever. Had a nice produce stand.
Right.
So basically, um, you want to sell motorcycles? Anything else?
No, just, just, we're just motorcycles.
Okay. Any questions on the commissioners? No questions? And, um, no other people want to testify? Is no one here? Is that your wife?
I just-
Do you want to testify?
No.
They can still good? Okay. No problem. Hearing slows, we'll see you next week and vote on it, okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'll take him outside and yell at him. I'm like, what are you fun of you?
Make sure he gets you a motorcycle. With a sidecar.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly is the LC-25-16, short-term rentals, and I am going to ask the director to turn that over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, currently, the zoning ordinance, um, for short-term rentals includes a condition that the rental has to be owner-occupied unless the property is five acres or more. And Levy Court is considering simply removing that condition altogether. So there wouldn't be an, an occupancy requirement for any short-term rental, uh, regardless of size. So what this ordinance does is just remove that condition. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I only have one question, Sarah. What's their definition, or what's the code's definition about short term?
30 days.
And if it's 30 days, you run it over 30 days?
At that point, you're just a rental. A normal, ordinary rental. Absolutely, yeah. The county can't stop somebody from renting their property. The issue is the short term, the fewer than 30 days.
So this would probably help somebody that say they, they lost their house in a fire and they needed a place to stay. They could rent it short term, is that what we're saying?
It's, I mean, think Airbnb is more often what this is. Airbnb VRBO. Um, somebody renting for a weekend or a week.
Okay, thank you very much. Any commissioners got any questions? Okay, if not, we're going to move. Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Public comment, um, she's on a motorcycle, I guess. Commissioner comments? Any commissioner comments? No? Okay, any other business? Make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move with Mr. Mills second. Got a second by Mr. Peterman. Call, call, please.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Servan?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Calvery?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, to adjourn.